Good morning. If everyone will please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
By your head for the prayer. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
Amen. Moved to approve the minutes of May 13th.
Second, any discussion? Roll. Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes. Oh, I forgot to state that Commissioner Harrison is at a convention, would you call it? Seminar?
No, it's actually a meeting at the White House.
At the White House in DC he was very excited about, so definitely an excused absence. Do we have any public comment regarding pending resolutions? If not, we will move on to departments. First up, county engineer, and Dan Becker is here.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning. One resolution for your consideration today, and that's establishing-
I have two. We've got two.
I got one. Uh-oh.
Well, we'll see which one you only have passed.
I'll go with the one I have, which is establishing the removal of bridge load limits in Medina County. What would your second one be?
It was about Longacre Lane, a culvert replacement.
It looks like a-
It was rescheduled.
Yeah, maybe.
So we won't-
Let me tell on you.
So-
So we got two.
You have two.
Okay.
Can you approve it without me reading it?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, 100%.
Here, go ahead, go ahead.
No, no, it's all right.
We can do what we want.
Is there a second one? The second one is determining the necessity to close Longacre Lane for culvert replacement and drainage work.
That sounds like us.
Okay. It's a reschedule.
It looks totally legit, and I was going to say-
I apologize for the mix-up.
That's right. No, that's all right. We'll keep you going. I moved to approve both resolutions.
Second, any discussion?
No, we've discussed enough.
Okay. Roll. Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Jeremy Cinco, our sanitary engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I actually only have one resolution.
Okay.
You are correct.
Authorizing the transfer of funds between various sanitary engineer funds and county funds.
Moved to approve.
Second, any discussion? Roll. Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Holly Miran, our human resources director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On our personnel changes resolution today, we have two new hires, one at Dog Shelter and one at Job and Family Services, 18 rate increases, one in human resources, one in maintenance, two in transit, one at senior and adult services, four in sanitary, two in solid waste district, four at Job and Family Services, and three in the building department. We have one promotion in sanitary, one change in position control number at Job and Family Services, one leave of absence at Job and Family Services, one suspension in transit, and one separation in Job and Family Services.
Moved to approve.
Second, any discussion? Roll. Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Brett Thomas, our finance director.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I have eight resolutions for you today. See, I could have slid Dan's in with mine. Nobody would have even noticed. All right, our first one is our monthly amendment of the appropriation measures. We have a couple notes on here, one of which is the sheriff's increases for their donation funds. That's just bringing it up to current cash. That's not new money being spent. And then the capital improvements budget, we have some increases for the county home coming through. Our second resolution is amending our appropriations by transfer. The big one on here is our funding per your directive for the CASA initiative. That is the court-appointed special advocates for children. Our third resolution is expenditure adjustments for various funds. We have some moves around here for grants, particularly for planning and the Community Development Block Grant or CDBG grant. The others are just kind of housekeeping measures for transfers over to correct line items from incorrect entries. Our fourth resolution is cash transfers for various funds. These are mostly for the idea of corrections of prior transfers and then incorrect deposit. Then we have our fifth resolution, which is approving submission of the fiscal year '26 Felony Delinquent Care and Reclaim Grant. This grant is very useful for us in the courts, and the amount is $1,183,599.45. Our sixth resolution is our expenses of the county engineer. Travel to West Kent for $16 for a lunch expense there. Our seventh resolution is expense for other county officials. We have nothing out of state or particularly large this month. And then we have our weekly bills in the amount of $1,775,696.17.
Moved to approve the eight resolutions.
Second, any discussion? Roll. Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes.
Thank you, commissioner.
Next up, we have Matt Springer, our county administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have six resolutions. The first one is authorizing the bid process for the restroom renovation project at Human Service Center. These plans are about 90% complete, so we're going to be ready to go out for a bid here shortly.
Good.
The second resolution is approving grant funding for program year 2025 through 2026 for the McDAC. There are seven entities, including our Drug Task Force, that would receive a total of $1,847,096.27 in funding. Obviously, as you know, that helps support school resource officers throughout the county and the local school districts. Third resolution is approving the initiation of a renewal levy for McDAC. That would be placed on the November 2025 ballot. We will begin working with the auditor's office on those levy projections. Fourth is declaring motor vehicles access property. This is a 2016 F-350 used by the sanitary department in their line maintenance, which is no longer needed, and will be placed on public auction. The fifth resolution is approval of a temporary liquor permit. This is for an event at the Medina County Fairgrounds on June 27th through the 29th. And then sixth and final is accepting proceeds from the Gregory Burry Revocable Trust. These proceeds will be made available to the Medina County Dog Shelter per their request.
Moved to approve the six resolutions.
Second, any discussion? I would just like to say that the McDAC levy that will be on in the fall is a straight renewal. And for the last several years, the focus of the funds have been the Drug Task Force and School Resource Officers. So again, that will be a straight renewal in the fall. Roll. Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so department updates. Richard Nelson, our chief building official.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Building Department Monthly Report for April. The value of construction still running lower than last year, about 23% lower. New home costs for last month spiked up to $452,000, which brings our average new home price for the year now to $422, up from $409 last report. We had 35 home starts, which was four to five homes below average for April. But they're making up for it here in May. I think we've already exceeded that number already this month. Moving on to page two, our monthly receipts actually ended up being almost 2% higher than last April, which is kind of amazing. And year-to-date, though, our receipts are down 9%. And moving on to page four, residential permits issued by townships and villages. All quantified there. And page five is commercial permits issued also by township and villages. And page six is the commercial permits identified with their value and construction type or use group, I mean. So nothing too amazing. We are still looking for another electric inspector. We're down an inspector. So we're hopeful to get one hired before we get any busier here. It's already our busy season, but we haven't felt the effects too badly yet. But it's going to be a problem pretty soon if we don't get somebody. There's a shortage of inspectors across the state, possibly the nation. So the State Board of Building Standards has changed some of the requirements to become an inspector, to become an inspector across the board. They've-
Are the qualifications significant?
Hmm?
I mean, do they need several years' experience?
It's the experience things that they've kind of relaxed on. So it's a good, bad thing, but you've got to have inspectors to do our stuff, so it is interesting. So they're making it easier. It should allow more people to get into the industry. But it's interesting. So we need somebody, and anybody can do it. Stan, would you think?
I might have a referral.
There you go. Oh, not yourself?
So can somebody start with very little experience and then you train them?
That is a-
That's the requirement states has a lot now.
That's a method, a training type is a method.
Okay.
It's a long, kind of a longer process, so because you're getting your experience within the department. So it's less desirable.
Have they done anything, I guess, to start working with the trade schools, the career centers and so forth, to kind of encourage interest in?
I don't know about that. That's really, really, really starting at day one.
Okay.
But-
We get them in the field, and eventually they can get them into inspecting.
Yes. No, it's a little bit of a tough go. The ideal situation is when somebody had a career and they were in the industry and gained all the experience and the knowledge and the blood, the sweat, the tears. They make the best inspectors. You know, it's no doubt about it.
So I did notice that the new homes to date, for us in 2025, is the same number in 2024, 116.
Altogether?
Yeah, altogether, yeah. But of course, last year, we didn't have Wadsworth, though. City of Wadsworth.
True.
So we've got three houses. If we didn't have Wadsworth-
Yeah.
It'd actually be less.
Yeah, you already looked at Wadsworth, and that's three.
Yeah, Wadsworth's like three houses this year.
Yeah.
So Wadsworth has kept us up.
But it's been a good collaboration with Wadsworth, so.
Yeah, it's been fine.
It's been a benefit.
Good, yeah.
Yeah, it's a good thing. Sure is. Our review times, commercial about 20 days, residential has stretched out to five or six days.
Still good.
There's a lot of, yeah, true. Very true. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Jody Robbins from the Convention Visitor and Bureau.
Hello. Hello. All right, so my report back in February was more of a kind of year-to-date, so this is a more in-the-weeds report. Feel free to ask questions. So the tourism industry KPI is 20-plus visits, meetings spanning the entire county. A highlight of some of the visits and discussions we've had, I met with Fiona Quaid of H2 in Medina to discuss helping next year with the ICE Festival. Seems that attendance was a little low this year as far as the businesses were concerned. And so I think we need to do a better job at the CVB promoting that event to not only our visitors, but sometimes we do promote things within the county, so getting more people there. We had a great discussion with Sean from Hillendale to discuss how the CVB can assist with in August 2025 and 2026 national shooting competition. So that's going to bring over 700 families to the area. So it will be quite a conundrum as we have the Medina County Fair, this championship tournament, as well as the Hall of Fame weekend is all kind of together. So I think it's safe to say that our hotels will be maxed out. We had a good discussion with Scott Andrews of Packard. We got a tour of his Medina facility, and then we talked about what it would look like to work with a regional bus tour company to have a Packard tour, including the Youngstown Museum, the Proving Grounds in Michigan, and then bring them back here. The idea is to maybe launch that when the legacy hotel is up and running. We had another great discussion with Mary Beth Taylor, the manager of Hawthorne. She kind of is the mayor of Hawthorne. In Seville, we talked about her types of visitors. She has a lot of recurring visitors for events in the area. And we also talked about some of the long-term stay options that they have there, with some of the rooms having a full kitchen. We met the new owner of Back9 in Brunswick, which is a new organization. It is an indoor golf simulator. Her name's Anne Marie Fisher. It's a really neat program, and we talked about how we can promote golf with that. I've been working with a small cohort of interested parties to see how we can revitalize tourism in Lodi. I was able to visit the newly renovated Westfield Inn, if you have family coming in from out of town during the week.
I'd like to see that.
It is phenomenal. It's done in the seasons, so each wing and floor has a different season. It's amazing. It's worth a couple of stay. We actually have an influencer coming in June, and we're going to have her stay there, just so she can write about it.
Good, good.
We were able to meet with James Justice, who is the owner of the vineyard in Brunswick, and he took us in his side-by-side, and we did all the things. Amazing property, amazing. I can't wait. He said his vision is if you had Gervasi meet Stan Hewitt, is kind of his vision.
So when are they going to be opening up? What's the plan?
He told us 2027. So what has happened is, it's been a blessing, but as they have been mitigating issues that they've had with the land or anything like that, they find these blessings, but then they have to figure out a way to make it work.
Sure.
So he said 2027. Yeah, if you ever drive out that way, they actually have one of their five villas up. And so there will be five. Yep, so there's one up there. You can see it. It's a beautiful barn-type structure, but it's more like a modern barn, and it's very tall so that you have the benefit of looking out over to the grounds.
Yeah.
It's, I'm so excited. Also was able to meet with Carol Carter to get all of the Seville tourism events coming up for the summer. We continue to have conversations with Black Hat Books and Oddities to talk about partnerships in their event schedule for 2025. We will be promoting county tourism through their events, as well as working to create some specific itineraries that event attendees can have in hand while they're in Medina. Their next or their first event of the year is Florafest on Medina Square on June 1st. And then June 28th and 29th is the Big Ohio Book Con, which is something new for our county. It will be held at the fairgrounds in the community center. And we have a booth right inside the door when people come in, so anybody looking for information. And they're also going to have Grater's Ice Cream, so.
Ooh, okay.
We will be excited for that. We received our quarterly top feeder marker parts from our four major hotels. I'm getting help from our board member, Sean Leatherman, with the American Hospitality Group to wade through the data and use it to continue learning about travel and stays in our area. And we think that after a solid year of reporting, we'll be able to have solid numbers that show if any of our current marketing efforts are supported by visitors coming. So it's kind of an exciting thing to know that we could have some ROI, you know, very shortly, which is something that I've kind of been wanting to have. It's just hard. Important meetings to note, I was able to sit down with Representative Melanie Miller. She is the current board chair of the Arts, Athletics, and Tourism Committee. And then I met her aide-mark at Ohio Tourism Day, so she has a lot of really good ideas. She's very pro-tourism, which is great when you've got someone kind of at the helm who sees the value in the areas that she supports. Was also able to be at the Medina Pedal Bike Ribbon Cutting, so that was quite fun. And there's lots of things you don't know about the pedal bike, so I would highly recommend that you try it out, because it's really fun. Your pedaling does not make the bike go, so if there was any worries at all about how the bike goes, you don't have to pedal. And we were also able to go to the Market 42 Ribbon Cutting, which I have no words. It is a phenomenal-
Yeah, Erin went. He said it was great.
It was, yeah. Yeah, well, on your way home.
All of course were great.
On your way home.
You could find a parking spot.
You know what? There is-
What I heard.
Yes. That event was very difficult to find parking, but I've been up there several times during the day, like during the week. I haven't done a weekend yet, but there's ample parking.
Right, yeah.
So. All right, so community partners, strategic initiatives. I became a member of the Fall Foliage Tour Board, so we're working on that. We're very excited about that. We have a really good, we're going to be in the northern, kind of the northern quadrant for that. I've also joined the Medina 250, so Ohio has America 250 communities, and Medina is one of those. So I'm excited to see-
Medina and Brunswick?
Medina and Brunswick. I'd like to see your book. I'm excited. The May group and the October group are the two that I will be sitting on. So each member of that board has to be involved in two major events. So May, we're still kind of unsure what we're doing, but it's going to be a lot of Think the Arts for May. And then October is going to be food, fun, and farms. So with our very rich agricultural history, I think it'll be good. I re-entered the arena of Beer Fest after taking a year off and was served on that committee, and you can see your cups in front of you. The Convention and Visitors Bureau, and I can't take credit for this because it was my husband's idea, but we hosted the, oh my gosh, designated driving area. There you go. So anybody who came in that was a designated driver, they got their usual pop and water, but we partnered with Picklebacks to create two signature mocktails that they were able to have, to choose.
That's great.
And then we sold the mocktails with all proceeds to anybody who wanted them, with all proceeds going back to Main Street, so.
Fantastic. Great idea.
Kind of a fun idea. And so they're going to have those mocktails this summer. Picklebacks will have them on their menu.
Cool.
They're very good. Should try them out. Also, I served on the Medina County Historical Council, and they had their dandelion drive on Sunday, so I'm waiting to hear back how that went. Other community meetings, attended the Greater Medina Chamber meeting. The program in April was the Medina County Park District, so that was great. Attended a member meeting for the Northern Medina County Chamber Alliance at Bunker Hill and got to see their new area. I was able to participate in one of Wadsworth's first Fridays, so that was fun. I was down there in April, and then they had all of their Volkswagens. Continued to go to the MCEDC's member meetings. It was at their annual meeting. And I was able to attend the Ohio Hazit Annual Meeting, so I was trying to learn a little bit more about this organization. And they focus on group bus tour for the state. And so that was kind of what we learned about, what their plans are, what they're doing. Some issues with the industry, not knowing with tariffs and things like that, not only in tourism itself, but in actually making the new buses that get retired every year. So more to come on that. Board engagement, continued meetings with Bethany Dentler. We've had some new board development guidelines that we're working on, and I was able to sit down with Jim Gerspacher and Jacqueline Rinksmeyer to talk to them about that. Had a meeting with Mark Preby about the longevity of our partnership with Proximity Marketing. And we also welcomed our first new board member. So we have to have three-chamber designees, and the Seville Chamber was ending. So we reached out to Janie Parish of the Wadsworth Chamber, and she recommended Sandra Lambert, who owns and runs Escape Wadsworth, so someone else in the tourism industry is joining our board. She's going to be a really good fit. Programs update, marketing and promotion. Collectively since February, the Convention and Visitors Bureau has placed ads or sweepstakes and stories in the following print publications. A few of them are in front of you. Ohio Magazine, Long Weekends, Crossings, Medina County Magazine, Great Meetings, Or Mako Programs, Ohio Travel Guide, Wayne County Guide, Travel Host Golf Guide. A new one for us was Travel Taste and Tour. And then two new ones were Indianapolis Monthly and Pittsburgh Post-Gazette. So our new marketing initiatives, we reached out to see how we could be promoting Medina County to markets outside of the state. Our first one was through Pittsburgh Post-Gazette, where we did an ad for Medina County Parks District. It was a half-page ad, and it was in the newspaper. And then we added a story and banner ads on their website for that one. And then in an effort to introduce Medina County and the state to the greater Indianapolis area, we attended the Indy Caramel Children's Festival and followed up with an ad and a story in Indianapolis Monthly and had banner ads on their website. So when we had asked a lot of the people visiting our booth, "Have you ever been to Ohio?", they said yes, but it was Cincinnati. So we encouraged them to go the opposite corner and come to this area.
You did some social media posts on that.
Yes. Yeah, it was a great event. And it was really cool, because Spider-Man presented, and we had a picture of Spider-Man in our new kids' guide.
Which I tell you, I love that new kids' guide.
Isn't that great?
That really is so cool.
Matt did a phenomenal job. Everything he touches is golden, so that was-
I think adults would like it, too.
Yeah.
Even in it with all the pizza guide in it.
Yeah, where can I go for pizza on a weeknight, right?
I didn't know there were so many. I guess I knew there's a lot of pizza places, but geez.
And none of them are chain.
I know. Oh, yeah, indeed, indeed.
Right.
I know, love it.
We just finished a project, and I almost forgot to write this in my report. So the State of Ohio Tourism Co-op, basically what happens is the Medina County CVB entered into a state co-op program. This program is intended to promote collected tourism assets at the state and local level, meaning the state pays for half of the two-day content shoot, and the CVB pays for two days of that content shoot, and then the assets acquired and storytelling efforts that go with it. This content will in turn be used by the state in their efforts to promote Ohio tourism in their yearly Ohio Visitors Guide, commercials, ads, website, and other platforms. The CVB's benefit is getting to select what content is shared and then use it in our own marketing efforts. So once the story is displayed on the state's website, I will forward it to you so that you can see that. This is what we highlighted in that two-day shoot. So Market 42, the Susan Hambley Nature Center and Parkin Around It, near a park in Brunswick, Ignite Brewing, Carolyn Mugridge, Mapleside, Jane's Diner in Medina, downtown Medina Shopping at Lily Nicholas and Honeybee Bakery, Medina Farmer's Market, Wadsworth Downtown Shopping at Quaint and Urban Cottage, Ridge and Rail, and Benningers. So we will have assets and photography that we will be sharing with the state, and then they will be using it in their marketing efforts. Social media, website-hosted content. We, the Medina County Convention and Visitors Bureau, were highlighted with Ohio: The Heart of It All, Ohio Traveler, Ohio Summer Events Guide, Ohio Magazine, Great Ohio Road Trips, My Ohio Fun, Long Weekends, Family Field Trips, and again, Travel Taste and Tour, as well as the Midwest Husbands. So television, this is kind of a fun new thing for us. So I was able to participate with the Brunswick Beat, which aired on February 10th to showcase what the Medina County Convention and Visitors Bureau is. Matt and I were on Kicking It with Kenny on February 13th for the ICE Fest. On February 18th, we had the taping of the Spring Travel Show for Good Day Extra in Columbus, and they have three stations that we popped up there. It was aired March 26th and 28th on Columbus Fox, ABC, and CW channels. And then Good Day Extra visited us last week or two weekends ago, because they really wanted us to be part of their summer show, but Matt and I were too busy to go down here, so they sent a crew up to us at Market 42.
Wow.
So that will air Memorial Day weekend. We did our first podcast, which was really exciting, so Howard Fox of Outdoor Writers of America reached out to us. The episode aired on April 22nd on all streaming platforms and YouTube, and Matt and I will do our next podcast with the Wadsworth Chamber. Organic social media reach, something of note for LinkedIn. So LinkedIn is a new, kind of a new platform for us, and that is where we are highlighting places that people can hold corporate meetings, trainings, team building, things like that. So that did really well, so of that new guide, and that also is in front of you. We continue to work with Proximity Marketing on monthly newsletters, itineraries, quarterly stakeholder email. Matt and I, as we discussed earlier, were able to go down to Ohio Tourism Day last Thursday. So the state said that they had their biggest attendance ever. Bed tax strategy, so I have an upcoming meeting with Auditor Capretta to dive deeper into the scope and processes of bed tax collection and better our relationship with the auditor's office. We're also continuing to follow Ohio legislation updates at the state level. We're waiting to see the outcome of the legislation for the short-term rentals and how that turns out. Visitor Guide Distribution, the new 2025 guide arrived on our doorstep at the end of March. We've taken them to hotels, museums, attractions, distribution points, like the travel plazas and turnpikes have received them. And we polybagged 5,000 of our guides with the April edition of Ohio Magazine in the greater Toledo area. So we had done that last year with the Dayton and Cincinnati area, and this year we kind of sent it out to Toledo, so we'll see what happens. Our new kids' guide was released at our booth at the Indianapolis Caramel Children's Festival. This guide was produced by Matt, highlighting fun things to do throughout the county. And it was made for kids by kids, so we actually reached out to several families in the community and had them, we had a student write the inside letter. The artwork for the map is all done by a child.
And it'll be every year like the other guides?
I think so. We're trying to see, so we wanted to sell ads for it, but we really didn't know how to sell ads for something that we had never done before. So she has, here it is. If you want one of these, you can reach out to our office. You can email jody, J-O-D-I, at visitmadina county dot com, and we can send you one. We just didn't know how well they were going to do. We just didn't know how well they were going to do, but because Matt did such a great job with it, we're already thinking of ways to add to it for next year, so if you have any suggestions, I'm open for it. Meeting Planner Guide, another labor-intensive effort by Matt to make a comprehensive list of all the places to hold a meeting, training, team building, or conference-type event. So this planner sat on our website for some time, but with Matt's efforts, it's now something that we can plan to use first in our county, and then next to our sister counties to say, hey, come here and have a meeting. So don't go to that place up north, it's a little bit more expensive, and we've got just as many great, cool things for them to have here. Personnel Management, Matt's been with the CVB for just over eight months. He's doing a phenomenal job. He manages 95% of our organic social media and all ad creation, he's also working on a strategic marketing plan for the rest of year, and he and his family will be welcoming their second child in June. And then we have a new intern coming, his name's Dominic Adamate, and he's from Bowling Green's Hospitality Program. He's going to start this Thursday. His efforts will be on website cleanup and listing events and following Matt and I wherever we go, which is a lot of places. On the subject of events, I don't think it's known, but if any organization has an event that they think might be something that a tourist would want to come to, you can actually put those, you can submit those yourselves through our website. So if you go to the website, visitmadinacounty.com, there's an area that says events, and if you click on that and you kind of scroll to the bottom, there's a green bar that says "Add Your Event", and those events can be added. We kind of go through them to kind of weed out ones, like a garage sale maybe wouldn't be something that we would approve, but anybody can put events on our website, so that's just a little secret to let you know. And then just finishing up, I will be finishing the Ohio Travel Association Leadership Class, so I was part of that class, we started in January, and we've met each month since. We spent the last five months learning about Ohio tourism and how our local tourism economies benefit from how the state markets itself. So graduation for that will be at the Ohio Travel Association Conference, and Matt and I will attend in October, so that's my report.
Super.
Everyone knows how into technology I am, so I did want to ask, I've been very fascinated by that place or AI that both Main Streets have access to. With your collaboration with them, will you be able to have access to some of that data?
Some of that data, yes, and we've actually been looking at ways that we might be able to benefit from that, like if we were to take place in that, but I think sometimes for the cost of it, it's only looking at data that happens when people are here. So yes, that would benefit us, but it doesn't help us to benefit who to market to.
But for the next year.
But for the next year, yes.
It's more for the next time, I feel.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, yes, we have really good relationships with both Main Streets, and we talk probably once a quarter, and so gathering that data and combining it with the top feeder reports that we're getting from the hotels, because I believe that place or AI will also incorporate hotels that are in that area as well. So, all right?
Oh, it does, great. Thank you so much, impressive, very good.
And no one even laughed about my comment about me being so into...
We're just used to it.
Okay, next up, we have some commissioner resolutions, so we have a resolution opposing John Walker Jr. to the Medina County Advisory Council on Aging and Disability.
So moved.
Second, any discussion?
Roll. Hambley.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes. Next, we have a resolution reappointing Scott S. Miller to the Medina Metropolitan Housing Authority Board.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Roll.
Hambley.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes. Public comment. Seeing as none, we will move into discussion session. Steve?
Nothing to discuss.
Anybody out there, anything? I just wanted to mention that I did get a text yesterday that the University of Akron transfer was approved by the Controlling Board down at the state level yesterday, so our next step has now happened with the transfer of that property, so I was very happy to get that text.
Super.
Anything else? And we do have an executive session?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we go into an executive session for the purpose to discuss imminent litigation.
Second?
Roll. Hambley.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes, we will not be coming back after, so see you next week. Thank you.
Great job, Jody. Very good.
That was really, really...